security will come to order. Please join me in a brief prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask the Lord for your wisdom and guidance this morning on our deliberations, the issues that face our country and our world, quite frankly, we'll be talking about this morning. Please give us ears to hear and lips to speak the truth. Forgive us where we fail, the Lord, we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen. The hearing come to order. Thank our witnesses for being here as well as the others. Many of you be wondering why the Committee on Agriculture would be holding a hearing on national security. A former chairman of this committee, the Honorable Kiki Delagarza, would often tell a story when asked, "How long can a nuclear submarine stay underwater?" The simple answer, "Till it runs out of food." With fewer and fewer Americans connected to production agriculture, many in Congress failed to recognize the importance of sound agriculture policy to our national security. Sitting on the Armed Services Committee and now chairing the Ag Committee, I find myself in a position to highlight this important relationship. Agriculture and national security are intertwined in many different ways, whether it's ensuring that food is available to meet nutritional needs for both those within our own borders as well as those around the world, or ensuring that food coming into our borders is disease and pest-free, or guaranteeing that farmers and ranchers have the needed policy tools in place to continue producing food and fiber. So my hope that this hearing, in this hearing, we can begin to examine the threats and vulnerabilities to agricultural security, as well as discuss the economic significance associated with those threats. The food and agriculture industry in the United States is not only crucial to public health and welfare of this nation, but it's an important force in the economic, social, political fabric here and abroad. The U.S. food and agriculture industry is almost entirely under private ownership and is composed of an estimated 2.1 million farms, which are the foundation of our nearly 1 trillion food and fiber business with over 150 billion in exports for fiscal 2014. In 2013, 16.9 million full and part-time jobs were related to agriculture, which is approximately 9.2 percent of the U.S. employment force. From a security standpoint, there are an array of sectors ranging from farms with relatively open croplands to highly secure food and dairy processing facilities. At the retail end, small neighborhood cafes operate in markets with large consumer chains, supermarket chains, and nationally franchised restaurants. Continuous changes in the way that food is produced, distributed, consumed, present new challenges for ensuring its safety and security. While increasing global trade presents opportunities for raising food, food safety and quality standards to levels commensurate with those of the United States, it also means increasing the amount of food coming into this country. In fact, the total volume of U.S. food imports has increased 60 percent over the last decade. This heightens the importance of ensuring that products entering our borders meet our quality and safety standards. Near-term threats to food security include weather, conflict, diseases, resource constraints, environmental degradation. For example, large exporter supplies of key components of food production, such as phosphates, potash, and fuel oil, come from states where conflict or government actions could cause supply chain disruptions that lead to price spikes. In addition, monitoring and controlling outbreaks of agricultural diseases will become increasingly difficult as the world becomes more integrated, disease vectors shift, and domestic animal populations grow and become more concentrated. Historically, our food safety, plant protection, and animal health regulatory systems have assumed the accidental contamination of food or inadvertent introduction of animal disease or plant pest. The prospect of an intentional or terrorist attack on our food and agriculture industry raises grave concerns that present challenges for producers and policymakers alike. We intend to dive deeper into the federal role to national intelligence. Prior to this appointment, he served as the U.S. Deputy Secretary of State and had several appointments as ambassador to Honduras, Mexico, the Philippines, the United Nations, and Iraq. He has firsthand experience protecting the national security of this country, and I want to thank him for his service and leadership. I also look forward to hearing from Dr. Tammy Beckham, Dean of the College Veterinary Medicine at Kansas State University. Dean Beckham has also served as a Director of National Defense in the United States Army, where she served the Armed Diseases. Focused on threats and vulnerabilities to domestic and international food security, we must remember the importance of our producers here at home. America has the safest, most affordable, and most abundant food supply in the world in the history of the world. It is by design. Sound agriculture policy has been an integral part of our ability to feed and clothe not only our nation but the world. Agriculture is the backbone of the economy, and throughout history, America has been able to not only survive but thrive because our agricultural safety net helps farmers weather the bad times. We must never forget, there is no food without the farmer. President George Bush, George W. Bush eloquently summed it up when he said, "We are a blessed nation because we can grow our own food. A nation that can feed itself is a much more secure nation." With that, I'll turn to the ranking member for any comments that he has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to welcome today's witnesses to the committee. A strong ag sector and stable food supply is critical to national security, and agriculture has an important role to play when it comes to our country's national security interests. It's something I don't think a lot of people really understand, and I appreciate the chairman giving a shout-out to our former chairman, Mr. Delagarza, who was a great chairman of this committee for many years.
And a Texan.
A Texan, yeah. And I'm probably one of the only, maybe the only person left on this committee who could recite the submarine story by heart, because I heard it so many times. But he made his point, and it's a very valid point. Today's hearing will allow us to examine the threats and any vulnerability to agriculture and the economic impact that these have, and as people know, I have a particular interest in iPath, avian influenza, and look forward to discussing this and other threats to agriculture, and with that, a yield back.
Well, we've now turned to our panelists. We normally have a five-minute rule, but given the unique nature of what today's hearing is about and the opportunity to be in to set a foundation for a grand strategy associated with our countries as we weave agriculture and its security in the process, I'll ask our witnesses to be respectful of time, but to don't worry about the five-minute clock, because we really want to hear what each of you have to say. So with that, Ambassador, the floor is yours. That will not apply to members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the relationship between national security and agriculture. And before I give a brief summary of my testimony, I'd like to mention that I knew Kika Delagarza. I knew him very well because he was also head of the U.S.-Mexico Congressional Caucus that used to meet periodically, the two legislatures, and he led the delegations down to Mexico City all the time. And of course, being from the border area there in Texas, he knew and having a Latino background knew Mexico extremely well. I also want to mention that during the course of my foreign service career and diplomatic career, I had nine overseas postings altogether during the 44 years that I worked in government. But I can hardly think of a place where I served where agriculture didn't figure prominently in one way or another in the situations we were dealing with, whether it was a crisis of some kind, or whether it had to do with our analysis of local political and economic conditions. You can't understand another country in most instances unless you understand something about their rural areas and agricultural conditions. And I was thinking, my first assignment in 1961 was to Hong Kong, and you'd say, "Well, what does that have to do with agriculture?" Well, back then, we were trying to figure out whether there was a famine in China, and we didn't have the means of intelligence that we have today. Today, we would just send a satellite and go survey a little bit of the terrain and so forth, and we'd probably be able to figure things out pretty fast. But we couldn't back then. We relied on refugee reports. We relied on people poring over Chinese-language newspapers that got smuggled out of China. Remember, there was a bamboo curtain at that time. We had a whole basement of a warehouse in Hong Kong where we got all these newspapers, and then we had people translating these articles, trying to look for traces of information about what the agricultural conditions were in China at that time. And we used to have some fierce debates amongst us as to just how bad conditions were, because our intelligence wasn't that good. Vietnam, of course, I served there. I mean, what more important country in the area of rice production, the Mekong Delta, fabulously fertile country. When I was there during the war from '64 to '68, and of course, agricultural production during those wartime conditions dropped precipitately, and a country that had been exporting 1.5 or so million tons of rice in 1939, before World War II, by the time of the Vietnam War, was importing food. And that was one of our major programs, was a commodity import program, to satisfy the food needs of the Vietnamese people during the course of the war. I can go on. Ecuador, bananas, biggest banana producer in the world. Mexico, of course, myriad agricultural issues had to do with NAFTA. The whole NAFTA question intersected. And how were subsistence farmers in Mexico going to fare in the wake of becoming more globalized, as the Mexican economy has? And Iraq, of course, my last post abroad. We're talking about Mesopotamia, the land of two rivers, where in ancient civilization, they were practically the inventors of agriculture as we know it. And by the time I got there, believe me, there was nothing in the way of agricultural production. And it was really a sad story, and I don't think it's gotten much better since. But maybe someday they'll restore their irrigation system that they had, which wasn't bad, and grow the date palms back that Saddam Hussein had cut down, down in the marshland areas, and so on and so forth. So you never can, you cannot escape the importance of agriculture. The other thing I'd like to say is a general proposition concerning America and its standing in the world. Agriculture is a public good for us, and the way we've conducted our agriculture over the past century and a half, and it's a global public good as well. How many times have countries faced severe food shortages and crises where they relied on us to help breach that gap, whether it was Russia during certain very difficult times during the period of détente, and elsewhere around the world? And I think we owe that, obviously, to our farmers, but we also owe it to farsighted policymakers, starting with Abraham Lincoln back in 1861 with the Homestead Act, and all that that has implied ever since. And thank goodness, we've kept up and nurtured the policies that were developed then. I see I'm already practically out of time. Let me just say, with regard to my testimony, initially, I discussed some trends, global trends, the globalized supply chain, which is becoming more important every day. I discussed the issue of resource security, especially water, and I think that's going to become, water may become to us in the decades ahead, what oil has represented in the past. And we don't have to look far beyond California to see that, but in the Middle East, it's a serious problem. They say that Syria's drought over the past several years has been a really exacerbating factor to the population there, and of course, helps create fertile ground for recruitment for terrorist groups. If people are unemployed, subsistence farmers are out of a job, they have no water to grow crops, they're very vulnerable to these kind of predatory behavior by people like ISIS. On the perhaps, you know, positive side, the rising global middle class, and that is resulting in changes in consumption patterns, especially in the rich and the middle-income countries. And that has its positive implications for United States agriculture in terms of demand for more value-added products. We saw that in Mexico in the wake of the NAFTA, and I think our exports of value-added and finished agricultural products is very good. There's the trend of skepticism of science, especially biotechnology. That's been an issue, especially with genetically modified crops. I think most of us here in America see that as a problem and an issue with the countries that have been resisting that, and it's going to be something we're going to have to deal with as we go on in the future. There's the long-term trend of rising energy prices. It doesn't seem that way right at this moment with the low price of oil and the low price of natural gas, but I think the longer-term trend is going to continue to be high, and how agriculture copes with the rising input costs. And then lastly, I'd say there's the exclusion of too many people from the global economy, some 1.4 billion subsistence farmers around the world who cannot make ends meet and who are becoming even increasingly marginalized by our increasingly globalized economy. I can think again back to Mexico of those maize farmers, the corn farmers in Mexico, who grew corn for subsistence. And obviously, once we got the NAFTA and we opened up, succeeded in getting the agricultural sector trade opened up between the two countries with just a couple of exceptions, this was going to be a threat to the subsistence farmers in that country, and all the social ramifications of that issue, people coming from the countryside and into the cities. And as you know, in Mexico, they don't necessarily stop when they get to Mexico City or Monterrey or Guadalajara. They just keep on coming up to the United States. So there are a lot of implications to the fact of subsistence farmers not being able to squeeze out a living. Let me stop there, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I ran over, but there's so much to talk about.
Well, thanks, Ambassador, and we'll get to our questions here shortly. Dr. Beckham, five minutes, and again, thank you for your service in the United States Army. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, good morning, Chairman Conway, and Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the House Committee on Agriculture. My name is Tammy Beckham, and I'm the dean of the College of Veterinary Medicine at Kansas State University. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding the importance of American agriculture and its relationship to U.S. national security. So as we've heard, the U.S. agricultural sector is very diverse, it's complex, and it's a highly integrated enterprise whose health and productivity is vital to the national and global economy, the safety and security of our food systems, and ultimately, the health and safety of the public health sector. The U.S. agricultural enterprise is a $1 trillion business, the largest exporter of food, and employs approximately 9.2 percent of American workers. And as I testified before you today, U.S. citizens reap the benefits of a robust agricultural industry that provides them with access to safe, abundant, and affordable food. U.S. consumers spend on average only 6.4 percent of their annual expenditures on food, and if you compare and contrast this to the 11 to 47 percent globally, the robustness and productivity of our agricultural enterprise becomes readily apparent. This is indeed a privilege that, as you well know, does not exist globally. There are currently 870 million people around the world that do not have access to safe and nutritious food and a sufficient supply, and by the year 2050, the global population is expected to exceed 9 billion people. The very elements that make the U.S. agricultural system robust and productive are also the same ones that make it vulnerable to a natural or intentional introduction of a biological agent. The U.S. agriculture and public health systems, while free from devastating diseases such as foot and mouth disease, African swine fever, and rift valley fever, as well as other highly pathogenic livestock, emerging, and zoonotic diseases, are increasingly becoming at risk for an introduction of these emerging diseases and zoonotic diseases. It has been estimated that over 70 that over 75% of all emerging pathogens are zoonotic, and that zoonotic pathogens are twice as likely to be associated with an emerging disease than non-zoonotic pathogens. And impacts from these diseases can lead to devastating economic and public health implications. A study that was recently completed by Kansas State University researchers predicted that costs associated with foot and mouth disease outbreak in the Midwest U.S., and in the cattle industry, could result in a total of $188 billion in losses to the livestock industries. In addition, we've recently learned firsthand from Porcine Epidemic Diarrhea Virus, or PED, HiPath AI, just how significant these disruptions to our economy can be. All these things said, it probably wasn't until the 2014 Ebola virus disease outbreak in the U.S. that our nation's gaps in preparedness for an emerging and zoonotic disease were fully realized. We lacked licensed medical countermeasures, the scientific knowledge about Ebola virus disease in animals and livestock, and a trained workforce that was able to handle these types of diseases and knew what to do. And simply said during this outbreak, the meaning of the term One Health took on new significance. In order to mitigate the threats and vulnerabilities and protect the U.S. agricultural enterprise and our international markets, we must act immediately to address these gaps in biodefense. Despite a large amount of progress since 2001, the nation is still woefully underprepared, and a coordination and comprehensive biodefense program is lacking. Success in addressing the gaps will be heavily dependent on an organized, strategic, and well-funded approach. And this approach should institutionalize the One Health concept. It should be highly collaborative in nature. It should leverage all available resources and encompass an international and global health component. We cannot ensure political stability abroad without addressing global disease issues and food insecurity at the national level, international level. This will require strong U.S. leadership and engagements through initiatives such as the Global Health Security Agenda. Coordination of a true One Health approach to biodefense has not materialized. Nowhere is this more highly visible than in the stark contrast between human and animal biodefense funding. During fiscal year 2014, 61% of federal funding for biodefense was allocated to the Department of Health and Human Services. But by comparison, 1% of the federal government funding was allocated to the USDA for agricultural biodefense. If the nation is to establish a robust biodefense strategy that includes a commitment to institutionalize the One Health concept, funding levels must be increased to the agricultural sector, and they must be strategically utilized. The U.S. agricultural sector is critically important and intimately linked to national security in the U.S. Simply stated, U.S. ag security is national security. At this moment, it is critically important that the U.S. government and its private partners come together and work to add both a sense of urgency and direction to the nation's biodefense preparedness efforts. Appointing a central office and council that could be responsible for developing and implementing a more coordinated, cohesive, and collaborative national biodefense strategy would be a large step in this direction. Furthermore, a leader or council that could assemble a robust team of federal and industry partners could help lower barriers to prevent our ability to truly implement the One Health initiative. Barriers to the One Health initiative could be overcome with time, collaboration, interdisciplinary programs, and budgets to support and incentivize working together to prepare our nation for the next emerging disease event. Indeed, the One Health concept must be understood, adopted, and become part of the fabric of the way we approach biodefense. And finally, Chairman Conway, and Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the House Committee on Ag, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today regarding the importance of agriculture to national security. And I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank our witnesses this morning. The Chair would remind members, they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority. For members who were here at the start of the hearing, after that, members will be recognized in order of arrival. I appreciate members' understanding. In a break from the norm, we're going to recognize Mr. Kelly, take my five minutes. Since he told me he has to wait, he and Mr. Newhouse have to wait. So I'll recognize, my five minutes will be taken up by Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, you're working this for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, witnesses. Thank you, Doctor, for your service, and Ambassador, for yours also. Very briefly, actually, we probably, I never got to see you in Iraq, but I was over there at the same time that you were. And most of this focuses on the defense or making sure that we protect our national interests in agriculture. But there's also a very strategic interest in the way that we use agriculture as a tool, as an offensive, as an offensive tool, to help us in our strategic interests overseas. Had a young captain, who was older than me, but a captain in Iraq, Captain Jesse Cornelius, who was an agriculture teacher at home during my first tour in Iraq. And I dealt mostly with the Al Hila Embassy there. But he was very, very good in understanding how we could use agriculture as an offensive tool to help plug us into the culture there in Iraq and to help them learn how to irrigate better. So I would be interested, not just in the defensive aspects, but how we can use agriculture either in combination with our military units, or also as civilian organizations to strategically help the United States and other regions.
Right. And I think your point about using it as a tool is right on the mark in the sense that these countries have to also try to take a chapter out of our book. If there weren't so much corruption in a lot of these countries, surely they would have used more of their resources. I'm thinking of states that are failing and are not meeting the needs of their population, and where the subsistence farmers are leaving the countryside, leaving the country, Syria, for example. If they had had more stable institutions and invested some of that money in developing their agriculture, having an extension service, if you spend all your money, like Saddam did, on building palaces, there isn't much left for improving the irrigation system. I mean, governance, after all, is a really critical issue in all of this. So absolutely, there's a lot to do in encouraging supply chain development, various kinds of techniques. And I think also, and here we are very much a good example for the rest of the world, a strong agricultural education system. You can't just say that farming is for uneducated people and carry around that sort of social prejudice in your mind. You've got to help farmers become smart like everybody else because that's the new world we're operating in.
I would just say that yes, absolutely. I think it's incredibly important when working internationally that we utilize agriculture to develop relationships. It helps us work to develop those relationships, understanding what's going on on the ground. And developing those relationships helps us gather intelligence of the diseases that are out there, obviously, that could come to the U.S. I know the USDA Foreign Ag Service and AFIS do work a lot internationally, as well as universities are spending a lot of time internationally, training folks on protecting their animals from diseases, and many of the zoonotic diseases as well. But education and extension and helping folks set up and understand how those diseases are affecting their populations are critically important for us to maintain our national security, but also for us to help folks on an international level. So we'd agree.
Thank you. And then Ambassador, just very briefly, U.S. agriculture is critical to our infrastructure here in the United States. A nation that can feed itself is a nation that can survive anything, logistics. What do you see as our major vulnerabilities to outside threats in a minute place?
Vulnerability, and I didn't catch the last part, major vulnerability?
From outside threats.
Oh, with respect to our agriculture here in the United States. Well, I suppose you could probably think of several. One, of course, would be if the lanes of communication break down somehow, the trade routes around the world. So there's an important national security aspect. If some of our allied countries experience serious agricultural failures, that could be prejudicial if it were one of the NATO countries, or Japan, or South Korea, or Australia. So indirectly, we would be affected by that. And then, of course, we've been talking about the threat of if disease, particularly animal disease, were to come into the country. We had some very successful programs in Mexico that go back half a century, like defeating the screw worm disease in Texas and pushing it into Mexico. And ultimately, I think during the time I was there, about 25 years ago, ultimately pushing the screw worm entirely out of Mexico itself and down into the Central American isthmus. That was an example of very successful international cooperation between us and other countries on defeating a very serious animal disease.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I yield back. Ms. Peterson, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ambassador, in your testimony, you spoke about a global trend being skepticism of science. And it's interesting to me that consumers seem to embrace technology and every other part of their lives, with the exception of the food they eat. And, you know, is there anything we can do to reverse this trend?
Well, it's been a major challenge for our scientific community and for some of our advanced agro, agro-scientific industrial companies like Monsanto and others. We seem to run into that issue more in Europe than anywhere else, although the countries that are also under the influence of Europe, the influence of their assistance programs as well. I think there's, you have to keep pressing these issues in trade discussions. I think that there's just got to be more and more dialogue. Clearly, modern science and biotechnology has an important role to play in increasing agricultural production and helping protect agricultural products and crops and plants from disease. So I just think it's a question of continued educational and dialogue between the scientific communities of the countries concerned. And over time, I suspect, especially, especially if, as we predict, the world population's go to 9 billion people, and agricultural production globally by 2050 has to increase by 50 or 70%, you know, people are going to finally have to accept that science is our friend in this enterprise.
Thank you. Dr. Beckham, you know, you talked about the lack of adequate funding for research. And, you know, I just also wonder if we're doing an adequate job in terms of understanding the vulnerability that we're creating by the increase in trade. It seems to me that we've exposed ourselves by opening up the economy to a lot of trade with countries that don't have the same standards that we do. And I'm not sure we have the resources in place to make sure that, you know, that they're doing what they should do before this stuff comes in. So, you know, I was wondering what you think about the whole issue of funding, you know, being adequate to address these concerns. I mean, obviously, the HiPath avian influenza, you can't do much about the ducks coming in from Canada, you know. I don't think there's any way to interdeck them. They could shoot them in Arkansas, but other than that, but I just, I'm concerned that we're not keeping up with the research and other aspects to combat the threat that's out there.
So I would agree with you. So we, if you take a look at the funding that goes to agriculture, and I think one of the things that I pointed out, that there was a large discrepancy between the ag biodefense funding that goes, I mean, between the biodefence funding that goes to HHS and that that goes to ag, we really struggle to have the means available to us to develop countermeasures to combat things like foot and mouth disease, African swine fever, which is an emerging disease. We saw what PED did to the swine industry. And just having the ability to be flexible enough and to rapidly move with resources to address those issues, to implement robust biosurveillance capabilities, the IT infrastructure to support that, to incentivize our producers, we need resources to address all of those types of things and all of those countermeasures. I believe that having a budget as small as it is to address developing vaccines, to incentivize our public partners, our private partners, to address those, to take on those vaccine, that vaccine production that clearly has no market here in the U.S., those are the types of things that we're going to have to address. And that's going to require more resources, resources to go toward agricultural research. The same thing with Ebola virus. When the virus came into the country back in 2014, we had a companion animal that was potentially exposed. And we had no idea what the result of that was going to be and how we were going to handle that. And we had no resources, medical countermeasures to address that for animals as well. So we need to increase our research. I pointed out the One Health component. That's critically important because most of these diseases are zoonotic, and we need to be able to address that. And we need to be able to develop countermeasures that are effective to stamp it out in the animal population before it gets to the human population. And so, we are in desperate need of additional resources on the agricultural side. Thanks.
Thank you. I yield back. Chairman, you go back, Mr. King, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the witnesses. And it's turned to Ambassador Negra Panti. I want to especially thank you for your service to this country, a long and varied service in extraordinary places. And we did first meet in Iraq, and I listened to the exchange here, Mr. Kelly. And it occurred to me, not only did Saddam not spend any money on irrigation, but he shut the water off to the swamp Arabs to dry them out. And so I'll restrain my following comment on that and broaden this discussion out a little bit. And that is, as difficult as it is for us here in the United States to get this right, and I have concerns about even people who are trained in inadvertently spreading HiPath AI, for example, and I'm not alleging that, I just have concerns about it. Even if we get it right in the United States, what's the degree of difficulty to get the educational system up for disease containment in other countries and around the world? We're talking about a global reach to this. That's a big question. But maybe in the center of that question could be, is there a country anywhere in the world that comes close to getting this right that we can model some things off of?
Well, I'm going to defer, I think, to Dr. Beckham on this. But I would say that the countries we can work with, generally speaking, I would say would be our allied countries, like in Europe, and Japan, and Korea, where they have, Israel, where they have levels of education and training and experience that are similar in most ways to ours. There may be differences, but they're going to be of just degree only. So I think it's the, it's the advanced technological and scientific world with a powerful education systems that, you know, have to work together in support of trying to help build these capabilities elsewhere in the world. But I wouldn't be very optimistic in a country like Syria or Somalia that's confronting civil war, that, I mean, let alone just get a family doctor, or just a rudimentarily trained veterinarian is probably a huge challenge for them. But to get these sophisticated capabilities, I would have thought might be quite difficult.
I would accept that recommendation, as I do almost all of yours, and turn to Dr. Beckham for her response.
Thank you. So it is a complex question. And I would say that we do a lot to educate our veterinarians on the role that they play in responding to these outbreaks. I don't think that we're doing enough to continue that education out in the field. We have limited resources. We have right now, obviously, the foreign animal disease diagnostic course that's taught at Plum Island. We can send folks up to that to get trained on what these diseases look like. We can send them up there and get them trained on how to collect samples and how to get testing done. But we don't do a really good job of providing continuing education out in the long run for our veterinarians in the field so that they know what to do and how to handle these diseases when they get out there. We need to do that more broadly. And that's with our first responders as well. We need to be educating them either on the foreign animal disease or on the, on the zoonotic disease side. Obviously, in the educational system and in veterinary schools, we do educate them on what these diseases look like. That is part of the curriculum. But again, I think we can do more on that end, and we can do more broadly in the first responders. We do work with, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Well, thank you. I would just point out that with the AI, we were looking at a taxpayer expense of a number that approaches or perhaps exceeds $1 billion. And that's not the impact on the industry expense, just taxpayer expense. Your projected potential liability for a foot and mouth disease outbreak, which I understood to be for the United States, $188 billion in your testimony?
For the Midwest.
Okay, just for the Midwest?
Right.
And so, looking at the magnitude of that, what's your recommendation on livestock identification, traceability, and an ability to be able to reduce the amount of quarantine we have if we're effective in our identification and traceability?
So obviously, that impact comes from the number of animals that you have to stamp out or put down or depopulate. It also comes from the inability of sectors to move their products and their animals. And we know that with, for instance, the swine industry, they're very integrated. They need to be able to move animals and animal products. So that's where you see those types of numbers start to build up, and that's the impact to the industries. And you well know this. As far as being able to do traceability, As far as being able to do traceability, obviously, during any kind of disease outbreak, you've got to be able to quickly do trace forwards and trace backs, understand where those animals have come from and where they're going to. And the only way that you're going to be able to do that is have robust records that don't take you days in a state animal health official's office to flip through boxes to get to that. So we need some sort of system, much like what the swine industry has implemented, the premise ID system, that can reduce that number of days to get back to movements of animals and animal products.
Just in conclusion, digital, real-time, and industry-driven. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Chairman, your time expired. Mr. McGovern, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both for being here. Appreciate it. Ambassador, I'm a big fan of your wife, Diana, by the way, I just want to say that for the record. You know, I think this whole topic of how agriculture relates to our national security is important because usually we talk about national security, we usually only talk about the military relationship to it. And, you know, because good, robust agriculture leads to food security, leads to more stability in other countries, leads to, I think, enhancing our own security. And we have some great programs out there to help people in other parts of the world create sustainable agriculture, you know, to help feed their communities. That's a good thing. Programs like Feed the Future come to mind. And, you know, we have programs like Food for Peace, the McGovern Old School Feeding Program. I visited a pilot program in Colombia several years ago when Ambassador Patterson was the ambassador. And this is a program where we provide food to get, entice kids to go to school. And a young mother told me about her son, who was 11 years old, who every day was being, they tried to recruit him from the FARC guerrillas or the paramilitaries to join one of the armed actors. And they promised the mother they'd feed the kid. And now, she said, because of this program that the U.S., you know, created, I don't have to make that choice. My son's in school, being fed nutritious food, learning how to read and write, and hopefully he'll, you know, get out of the slum that they were living in. And so it seems to me, the more we can kind of focus on this, the more people around the world like us. And the more people like us, the less they want to do harm to us. It's not a radical idea. But I just wanted to bring up one point here. I think we also have to be looking at food security at the domestic level as a national security issue. Mission Readiness, a nonpartisan national security organization made up of retired admirals, generals, and other military leaders, has taken an active role in promoting healthy nutrition among our nation's kids and military families. They found that one-third of American children and teens are now obese or overweight, and nearly one-quarter of Americans ages 17 to 24 are too overweight to serve in our military. The hard reality is that obesity and hunger are often two sides of the same coin, with unhealthful, high-calorie foods cheaper and fresh fruits and vegetables more expensive. And they talked about the importance of our school feeding programs. You know, interestingly enough, our school feeding programs, our school lunch programs started in a large part because young people were undernourished, and the military leaders were concerned about their fitness for service during World War II. So I'd just be curious, any comments you have about the fact that, you know, in response to what Mission Readiness has said and how it relates to our security, that we're not even providing our own people the quality food that makes them ready for the military?
Right. Well, of course, I'm not particularly expert on that subject. I guess what I would say is, just as a citizen, I'm aware of the debate that goes on on these subjects and the tremendous amount of discussion that is happening around the subject of people's diets and also the diets of people at different income levels. There seems to be a correlation between poor diet and obesity and the high incidence of diabetes and these kinds of things amongst lower-income groups. And that's something I think there needs to be greater public awareness about so that it can be dealt with in our own society. But, and I think we can also play a leadership role, our academic community, our research community can play a leadership role in influencing thinking on these subjects, both here and abroad. But to your point about the international agriculture, I do think that having a strong agriculture in any given country is going to be a real factor of stability. It's what's going to root people in the countryside. It's going to keep them from depleting it and all pouring into the cities with all the problems that that brings in terms of creation of slums and so forth. And it's going to increase their sense of self-sufficiency and self-worth. So I think that having a healthy agriculture can be a really vital part of the political and security strength of an individual country. And I think we can point to various examples around the world of that being true.
Chairman, you'll be back. Chairman, you'll be back. Mr. Gibbs, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to our witnesses. It's interesting, Ambassador, to hear you recollect a little bit about what's happened in the past. Obviously, national security and economic security and agriculture all, you know, fit together, and I think everybody's in agreement on that. But I want to take a little bit of a different take. We talked about skepticism of technology, science, and I don't think enough people realize this, so I'm not going to say it, but I can give you many examples. But the best example I have is corn production. In 1950, the national, U.S. average, national average of corn was 50 bushels per acre. When I started farming in 1975, to have 100 bushel corn crop was considered good. That was becoming my goal. Now we're doing almost twice that. And I don't know what the acres are that were, have declined, but we know the terrible acres in this country have been taken out of production. Some acres have been taken out of production, obviously, urban sprawl and all that. And I can remember not too many years ago, a 10-billion bushel corn crop was a big crop. The last two years, we had 14-billion bushel corn crops. So if we weren't doing, if American agriculture wasn't doing what we're doing, we would have a food crisis already because we got less land to get that food from, and so our productions increased. And that's why I think people need to realize that it's science that's a big part of that. And if we're going to, you know, go forward, we've got to adopt the science, we've got to sound science, and we've got to make sure it's safe science. I'm no reason disagreeing on that. But I think that, you know, our conversation and our trade talks and everything we do, we really need to emphasize that the reason we have food security is because American agriculture production is able to increase based on technology and best managed practices and all that. So I just wanted to reemphasize that point. I don't know if you want to expound on that or not.
Well, just to say, I think it's absolutely true. And also, if you look at countries that are less well-off, very often, the cost of the food basket is 20, 30, 40, and in extreme cases, even up to 60 or 70 percent of the family budget. Well, then, at that point, you can't benefit from all the other elements of global prosperity in any way, shape, or form. So, I mean, it's, I think people themselves are going to get the message, especially in these, in large countries that are looking to feed huge numbers of people, whether it's India or China or others. And I think it's going to be demanded by the populations of the world and the farmers.
Well, when you're hungry, you only have one problem.
Right. That's correct.
We have many problems in this country because we're not hungry, I guess. Dr. Beckman, I just wanted to, we talked about funding for the zoonotic diseases, you know, diseases passed from animals to humans. And in your testimony, that's in the increase or potentially increase, 75 percent. How is our, and you talked about needing funding for USDA and that, how's the relationship between the USDA agency, AFIS, and all that, and the work to prevent, you know, swine flu, avian flu and all that, work with CDC? Is that relationship need to be better, or is it, how do you see that relationship on the human side versus the animal side with our scientists and the, you know, like CDC?
Sure. So USDA, AFIS does have detailies that are at the CDC and that work in the zoonotic disease branch there. And during the Ebola virus outbreak, it worked very, it worked very well. There was a lot of communication between USDA and the CDC, and they really quickly assembled a team to help us handle and put together procedures for handling animals that could be exposed. We worked very well because we had to work across the human-animal interface. Having said that, we were assembling those teams pretty much with the help of AVMA on the fly. And so I think, although it worked well, all too often, we're very reactive. And putting something in place that's more of a structure around creating a joint team that's working on the preparedness side and not necessarily reactive would be, would be good. That's going to require that the human health component see the animal health component as just as important, and that's going to require that there is some oversight that incentivizes folks to start developing policies and procedures and doing research, interdisciplinary research. Because these are really critical challenges that we in the animal world need to be working with our human counterparts to address before they happen, not after they happen. So since the Ebola virus outbreak, there's research going on, you know, more, probably more research.
We might have a coordination issue to make sure that our human scientists, animals, human disease scientists are, know the importance of what happened on the animal side and that interaction. So that might take some leadership from Congress.
Right. Some incentivization.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chairman. You'll be back.
Chairman, you'll be back. Ms. Plaskett, five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. I was very interested in this topic, and I think that it's, I'm very grateful to the chairman and ranking member for having this discussion. And one of the things that I know that one of my colleagues talked about were the countries that do this well. What are the countries that we feel are, present the most instability and are the biggest threats and concerns to the United States in terms of importing food into this country?
Well, I can address it from the animal disease perspective because I think that's a serious threat to our food supply. So looking at areas of the world that are, that have a lot of instability and where the diseases that we're most concerned about are occurring, I mean, you would have to take a look at the Middle East, you would have to take a look at Southeast Asia. Those are all areas, especially the Middle East, where you're seeing a lot of foot and mouth disease moving across borders. You see a lot of African swine fever on the, that's actually an emerging disease that's threatening Europe right now. If you take a look at how animals move in those regions, obviously, again, no borders, disease knows no borders. Those are real threats to our industry here because once something like that comes in to the U.S., we're going to have a mess on our hands. PED actually got into the United States as well, and we're not exactly sure at this point how it came in. There's some theories about how PED came in. I think the best thing that we can do right now is start to scan the horizon, develop disease matrices, look at what's happening overseas in areas that we're particularly concerned with, and get a good grasp on things that we should be looking forward to, again, being proactive instead of reactive in those regions.
Okay, thank you. Ambassador, did you have anything to add on that?
Well, as far as identifying specific countries, I really don't. But I would say that in areas where we've actually engaged in discussions or trade talks, for example, I know that in the case of Mexico, we had a lot of issues with Mexico about animal and plant health. And we were able to work ourselves ways through those issues, through dialogue, through ultimately having a trade agreement. And I can think of fruits and vegetables that were hard to get your hands on before the North American Free Trade Agreement that we can now buy in the grocery stores here in this country. So these issues are susceptible to solution, but the more dramatic cases of severe disease, I just wouldn't know what specific additional countries to mention.
So when we talk about that and look at the other countries that pose those threats, is the fear more or the concern more domestic, or is it the food supplies or food coming from other countries? What is a bigger threat, do we believe? Our own domestic possibility of disease and food contamination?
Right.
Or overseas, food that's imported here?
Well, they're obviously interrelated, but it seems to me that as government, I'm no longer a government official, but as somebody working on behalf of the United States, I would put priority on defending our own very precious agricultural system against these kinds of threats. So I think it emphasizes the importance of having constant surveillance and monitoring and tracking and maintaining those capabilities. We were talking about earlier, there's a whole generation of people who are retiring now, and it's important that those professionals and those experts be replenished in the supply of people working in our government who can help us defend against these threats.
Right. Well, you know, one of the things I'm interested in when I ask this question is, in the Virgin Islands, most of our food is imported. We have a lot of our processed foods and our meats that come imported. And my concern is as to what the specific areas should be doing about food that's imported. But also, we then have the real issue of those foods that we try to export having to deal with Customs and Border Patrol and dealing with, you know, inspections that then cause foods to go, to go bad.
Mm-hmm.
But the last thing that you talked about that I wanted to see if you would touch on is water security. Because I as well, you know, we're living on an island where it's water, water everywhere and not a drop to drink. Having a water supply that not only irrigates, but also is drinkable water and water that can sustain people over a protracted period of time is something that we think about quite often.
Right. And I think it's a serious problem in, especially acute in the Middle East and in some parts of our own country. But I think the Middle East is the area where you're seeing its greatest manifestations. And hopefully, we will learn the necessary lessons from that. I think Dr. Beckham had wanted to add something on the...
Oh, no.
Okay. Lady's time has expired. Mr. Crawford, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Crawford, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ambassador, Dr. Beckham, thanks for being here. Ambassador, actually, this is probably a question for both of you. I'll start with you, Ambassador. In 2013, EPA released some personally identifiable information of poultry and livestock producers. Specifically, they had geospatial business individual data that was released pursuant to a FOIA request by environmental groups. USDA and DHS has expressed some concern that release of this type of information poses a biosecurity risk. I certainly would agree with that. Do you agree that the aggregation and dissemination of detailed information on livestock facilities can pose a threat to bioterrorism? And what would you say to the EPA? And would you support proposals to, you know, to caution them from that type of behavior in the future?
Boy, well, we live in a society where Google publishes pictures of my front yard and the people who walk past it. So I, I mean, I don't know. You come up against this problem of freedom of information in this country, including what is being obtained through aerial reconnaissance of various sorts. I'd have to look at the specifics before I were to give you a really strong opinion on that.
Dr. Beckham?
Obviously, data confidentiality is incredibly important to our industries, and I would caution them against that. I think it has been one of the things that has hampered biosurveillance in this country. There needs to be a way that we can move forward with a robust biosurveillance program, but at the same time, we need to be able to protect the data confidentiality of our industries, and we need to assure them that we can do that. And that's going to be a difficult road going forward, but I think it's one that can be done if you work with the industries closely and build it from the ground up with the industries themselves. They, more than anybody, want to protect their animals against disease. And I think, again, working from the ground up with them to develop a system that maybe perhaps is not housed within the U.S. government, but maybe housed somewhere else where you could ensure them the protection from FOIA. And the protection from those data leaks are going to be critically important. There are some projects underway now that are looking at different ways of doing that, and they should be, continue to be funded and supported, and they should continue to work closely with the industries as they're doing right now.
Dr. Beckham, I think there's a lot of attention, or at least the idea of, the notion of failures of imagination when it comes to national security issues. I think that we could say that probably there was a failure of imagination in regards to 9/11. Who would have ever thought that something like that would ever happen? So my thought is, if I can conjure up ideas to threaten our food supply, for example, to introduce foot and mouth disease in a feedlot, surely others who have ideas of threatening our food supply and thereby threatening our national security have thought of this. Are we, are we failing in failure of imagination? Are we taking these things into consideration? What protocols are in place to address that? I mean, I, you know, I'm not a devious-type person, but I can come up with these ideas. So I know that folks that are seeking ways to harm us certainly have ideas like that. So I'd like to hear from you, and then Ambassador, your thoughts on that as well.
So I don't think we're failing. I think we've made a lot of progress since 2001, and I think the USDA and Department of Homeland Security in the Ag area, especially for livestock, have worked to make significant progress that we just weren't there in 2001. So I don't think that we're failing. I think that we need to build on what we've done, and I think we need to more close... what we've done. And I think we need to more closely integrate ourselves with the public health sector, because I, I bring that back to the One Health. Obviously, foot and mouth is a huge concern and it's not, would not be hard to do. And we have made significant progress. We have the first vaccine that's been licensed that you can make within the United States. And so that's great. But we have that vaccine for one serotype. And we need, and while there's been additional research and there's been more vaccines for additional serotypes in the queue, again, we're still lagging behind on moving that innovation forward for just that disease. But then you take a look at ASF, PED, AI, all the other threats to the industry. So we're, we're still lagging behind in that, not to mention the biosurveillance that I talked about before. The integrated biosurveillance system is going to be critically important to help us get, get a leg up on that, early detection. Obviously, the faster you can detect something like that, if it's introduced into a feedlot, the faster you're going to be able to control it. That's going to be really important. That's going to require additional funding to the National Animal Health Laboratory Network. It's going to require additional funding into the biosurveillance programs that I've talked about. And so some of those areas. So we're not failing so much as we just need a more coordinated approach and we need more resources to go into getting us there faster, because it inevitably will happen. I mean, we've been free from FMD since 1929. Not hard to introduce it. It's in all the areas that we just previously talked about. And, you know, we prepare ourselves for both the natural and the intentional introduction. And I think, you know, we have to look at it from both perspectives, right? So we're preparing ourselves for both. We have built bioforensics capabilities in the country for attribution, should we need that. Again, we're not failing. I think we could do more, but we certainly are not failing.
Jim's time, Jim's time has expired. Ms. Adams, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank, thanks to both of you for your testimony today. The recent outbreak of avian flu was highly detrimental for egg prices in the U.S., which negatively impacts consumers and our egg users in, in the baking and restaurant industry. Worse, it disrupts, disruptions in food supply hurt our most vulnerable. Mr. Beckman, while we can't stop every pathogen that travels through our ports of entry, what investments can we make to mitigate the damage from animal diseases that harm our nation's food?
Okay, so, yes, you're right. Avian influenza took an impact. It may take an impact on the turkeys we have at Thanksgiving this year as well. The things that we can do, biosurveillance, I'm going to go back to it, having a robust biosurveillance system, a robust early detection system, investing in the National Animal Health Laboratory Network, coordinating better with our public health sector, investing in vac, more vaccine and research on the upfront end so that we're not reactive, but we're proactive, training our first responders, coordinating with our state and local entities. Doing all of those types of things are going to help us better prepare. The earlier we detect it, the better we're going to be able to control it, and the faster we're going to be able to get it under control. And so doing all of those things will help us do that, and that's just absolutely where we have to continue to go.
Thank you very much. And let me apologize for not referring to you properly, Dr. Beckman. The, the 12th District, which is a district that I represent in North Carolina, is home to my alma mater, North Carolina A&amp;T State University, which includes the Plant Biotechnology Research Lab at Carver Hall on the campus. What opportunities are there for 1890 institutions to participate in research against crop diseases?
I can speak to opportunities with, with livestock diseases. I know that there are opportunities and funding opportunities for those colleges to invest and, and work within the system to do research for vaccines, to do educational training opportunities, to train first responders, K through 12 programs as well. So there's, there's plenty of those types of opportunities out there. And when I was at Texas A&amp;M, we did partner quite a bit to do that type of research with, with partners from 1890 universities.
Okay. And, and finally, Dr. Beckman, one of the major diseases that concerns farmers and, and the agriculture industry is an outbreak of foot and mouth disease in, in the United States, and you've made reference to that. If an outbreak occurred in North Carolina, how quickly and effectively could a vaccine be developed for U.S. livestock?
Okay, so the, the development, as you know, we have the national, we have the North American Foot and Mouth Disease Vaccine Bank, in which we host here within the U.S. and we have antigen concentrates in that vaccine bank. If we were to have to deploy that, obviously, there's a process. You would have to detect foot and mouth. You would have to identify what the serotype of the foot and mouth disease is because the vaccines are specific for a specific serotype. Once that's been done at Plum Island, then the, Secretary of Ag has to activate the North American Foot and Mouth Disease Vaccine Bank. That antigen is then shipped over to Europe, prepared into a vaccine, and then shipped back. So we're talking within three to five days of a confirmation. Would we be ready to deploy vaccine? It could be more along the lines of the five days. Recently, I'm also aware that USDA has moved to get access to supplies that are already prepared. And they're doing the safety testing on those vaccines as well, so that they would be readily available. There wouldn't be a need to ship the antigen across the ocean to get it prepared into, to vaccine. And so there has been some of that movement as well. So DHS in coordination with USDA are looking at different methods to have vaccine readily, more readily available in a quicker fashion. Again, some of that is how quick you detect it, and then how fast you confirm what it is, and you can serotype it, and then get moving on the bank.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You go back.
Jill Lacey goes back. Mr. Abraham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Beckman, you and I have a little commonality. I also being a veterinarian and being a M.D. also, I'm very interested in, impressed with your knowledge on these zoonotic diseases. And as you said in your testimony, that 75% of the emergent pathogens are probably zoonotic in nature. And my concern is, on the legislative front, this large discrepancy between DHHS and the USDA as far as bio-defense allocations. Why do you think they, there is that wide chasm between both agencies? Is because they're, they're fighting, hopefully, the same type of entity? Why the discrepancy between the USDA and the DHHS as far as funding?
I, I don't think I can answer why, because obviously, not involved in the budget preparation and so forth. I obviously think there needs to be a hard look at that. And again, I take it back to that One Health institutionalization of One Health concept about how you can incentivize those two agencies to work closer together and to develop medical countermeasures for the zoonotic diseases. In order to do that, I believe that you're going to have to have funding to incentivize more interdisciplinary and multidisciplinary teams.
Well, I guess, let me, what do you, I mean, other than a major outbreak, which we hope never happens, what can we do as legislators to somewhat open the eyes of Congress to send more money to the USDA and their prevention program? Is there any program, anything we can jump on board with?
I think there could be a better centralized coordination approach, perhaps an appointment of someone that's over bio-defense specifically, that coordinates with, within an interagency group to start putting objectives and putting metrics in place. And then also funding increases or funding that is generically out there that incentivizes research that's done in a multidisciplinary fashion, so that funding just doesn't go to one agency and then there's no crosstalk between DHHS and USDA, but that there's funding out there that's available for common grants, whether it's in academia, USDA, or DHHS, to address those in a more multidisciplinary fashion. But the funding has to go for the multidisciplinary approach.
All right. And let me, I guess, pony on, I think it was Mr. Crawford's question, as far as the individual farming entities, is what they can do. Do we as farmers and ranchers of the country need to form cooperatives for bio-defense measures? Where would you, if you could, if you could cherry pick what you would do for our individual, large and small farmers, ranchers, as, as far as prevention, what would you say?
It's broad. What would I do for farmers for prevention? I believe educational opportunities in biosecurity, continuing to develop the business continuity planning efforts and explaining to them why it's important for them to participate in that, and the biosurveillance. I go back to all of those things, the biosurveillance, education for our farmers on the importance of biosecurity. While a lot of the, obviously, larger companies understand that, there's still large gaps in biosecurity, and there's still not, I mean, even though we have business continuity planning efforts underway for the industries, and some of them have already been developed, they've not been implemented. And so that's, that's a bigger problem, is how you implement those, those business continuity planning efforts. Those types of activities within the industry itself will, will help get them better prepared. And then the other thing, I think, is involving them in decision-making and making sure they're at the table. Talking about biosurveillance, working with the industries themselves. I mean, they want to participate, they want to be protected. But how can we do that and protect their data? How can we do that and protect their confidentiality? What does that look like? And so this is a role that academia has played recently, is kind of being the go-between, between the industries themselves and the federal government. And in some ways, that's worked really well, because the industries are more likely to trust the land-grant universities. And when I was at Texas A&amp;M, we actually worked on a biosurveillance project where we worked closely with the industries themselves. And we were starting to get very good reporting from veterinarians and the industries, and they wanted to participate because they see the value in being able to use that data, along with the business continuity planning data, to allow them to move during a disease outbreak. And so if we can continue to educate, and if we can continue to work with the industries one-on-one, and, and assure them that we want to work with them and protect their data and educate them, I think those are the things that will really help them in the middle of a disease outbreak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My time. Jim Mios back. Ms. Lohann Grisham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know many of my colleagues, including Congressman King, really talked about whether we're doing enough as we're importing Dr. Beckham beef from other countries, and whether or not we are doing everything that we can to ensure that we're not reintroducing hoof and mouth and other zoonotic diseases with the viral capacity to, to really not just threaten our food supply in these herds. But in my state, when I look at the agricultural footprint and the value and importance of our cattle and beef industry, it would, we could lose whole herds and farms and ranchers. And that's something that certainly my constituents, and I know not just in my state, but all of us, hear a lot about and are very, very concerned about. And while your efforts here to educate and to do surveillance and as a, that public health environment, I have to say, I really applaud that we do have a robust surveillance education and monitoring system here. But in you, as you were describing, our abilities to do that outside of the U.S., it's not as robust. And it seems to me that we have a long way to go to create that kind of environment. Is there anything else that you haven't had the time to hit on that, A, gives us, you know, more confidence? Because I'm beginning to feel or be a little concerned that maybe that importation's a bit premature, given that we don't have those mechanisms in place in some of these other countries?
So we have to rely on strong scientific evidence that's either gathered from folks working on the international level. I know specifically what you're referring to. Obviously, risk analysis before importing any type of beef into the United States should be done. It should be a robust risk analysis based on scientific evidence. Industries need to play a role in that. And so all of those types of things need to occur. We do work within the OIE, the World Organization for Animal Health. In, in that structure, there is reporting requirements for notifiable diseases such as foot and mouth disease. But you're absolutely correct. I mean, one missed step in that, in one introduction, and we're going to lose an industry or a significant part of an industry. So going back, I would say we, it would be good for us to be able to expand, to work with our international partners, to develop relationships, to expand our biosurveillance outside of the U.S., which we talked about. The risk analysis, coming back to that, have to be very robust. Even though we do have a system here in the U.S., I wouldn't exactly yet call it robust.
All right.
I would say there's quite a, a work still to do in the biosurveillance part. And so we, we do have a lot of work to do, and yes, it is a risk. And yes, we have to hold accountable the strong scientific evidence behind the risk analysis.
And I have no problem with the, the scientific evidence. And I appreciate your caution about my statement that we have a robust system. In comparison to what I think our reliance and security levels are around the world, I would maybe say that my, my comments aren't so off-base. I'm happy to congratulate any of our government partners. But I appreciate your statement that we should be doing more. But, so I would, I can't imagine, you don't have our support to do as much as you need to be doing. I have no trouble with the way in which we use public health measures and epidemiology and scientific evidence to identify, treat, and prevent the occurrences and certainly the spread. But what, what are we doing that creates accountability? I'm not suggesting that we don't know what those other countries should do, but how do we hold them accountable? What can Congress do to make sure that that accountability is occurring more than identifying, these are the strategies that we expect all these other countries? And if it's just a check, we did all these things, what are we doing and what can we do to assure that there's real accountability in a global marketplace?
I think, again, you have to continue to work through our delegate, the USDA with OIE and the World Trade Organization. Again, going back to the, the risk analysis, holding them accountable. And if they're not adhering to the standards that we are able to verify those standards, then it would be incredibly important for us to be able to do that.
All right. And with the limited time I have left, Mr. Chairman, I would encourage the committee to ask USDA to, to write to us and identify exactly what we can do when we suspect that these are not being followed, and to enhance those efforts to the highest degree that we can. Because it doesn't seem to me like we're feeling very secure about our accountability efforts.
Thank you. Jill Lacey goes back. Dr. Benetcek, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you both for being here. Amazing resumes. Ambassador, you mentioned something to me that I didn't quite understand, and that it was that the, the plate of subsistence farmers you mentioned in some of these foreign countries has gotten worse because of global trade. Can you explain that to me?
Well, I think in many, in many, probably most cases, as imported food supplies become available in various countries, they come in at lower prices than the local subsistence farmers can produce. And I gave the example of Mexico. The, the maize corn farmers there simply couldn't compete with imported American corn. So that ultimately had the effect of dislocating a lot of those farmers. Now, they could go into other products, and, but that was, that was what I meant.
Oh, again, well, I guess I have a different idea of what subsistence farming is than, I mean, to me, was that they're growing their own food.
Right.
Does it mean something different? That they still couldn't grow their food cheaper than they could buy it? I mean, I don't understand.
No, no, I, I see your point. I, I meant to the subsistence in the sense of very small, low-level production that was lots of, you know, literally thousands of, of these kinds of farmers who are growing their own food, but they were also supplying some people in their environment, environments. But a lot of them have gone out of business as a result
All right.
of these imports.
Let me just go on then. Dr. Beckham, what is the, tell me about this One Health thing that you mentioned a couple of times a little bit more. I don't, I'm not sure I understand that either.
So One Health is the idea that human health, animal health, and environmental health are inextricably linked. And this is true. Obviously, you see the food supply directly impacting human health, disease impacting human health. A lot of the diseases, again, come from animals. So I think the concept of One Health is that working together across the disciplines, across the boundaries, that we are able to address the critical challenges that face us today globally. And so that's the idea behind One Health. One Health has been around for a very long time, but the term most recently has started to gather more and more momentum. I think as we saw, like I said, during the Ebola virus outbreak, we knew we had a One Health issue, but all, all too often, sometimes, again, the, the human health side, obviously, as it should, takes precedence. But there will be one day when we're going to have an outbreak, and it's going to be very severe in livestock or wildlife and humans. And, and we're going to have to look at how we address these things more from a holistic point of view. more from a holistic point of view, because in today's world, I don't believe that we can just silo ourselves off and not address our issues and our challenges from a more holistic point of view.
I think many have said that the United States lacks a coordinated biodefense strategy. And what do you think in the development of a coordinated biodefense strategy is the one or two of the most important things to do? You did mention better coordination. Besides that, what else do you have to say?
So I think having a council or a core panel that could coordinate biodefense activities across agencies, but that would also reach out to our industry partners and our stakeholders and bring people together to start looking at multidisciplinary ways of addressing the challenges.
We don't have anything like that now?
No.
Ambassador, do you have any comments on that question?
I'm not current, been out of government long enough to not know what mechanisms actually exist at the moment. But certainly a subject that's, that people think about. But I'm not sure there's an actual mechanism that exists to do that.
Well, you know, in your initial comments, you talked about the stability of the world in general and the ability of local governments to feed their people as a major factor in that. And basically, you said, all your travels, agriculture's always brought up. What can we do better to stabilize this? Do we, what programs do we have now and what can we improve?
Well, we do, of course, have programs. Agriculture Department has them, Feed the Future. They contribute to bringing in, giving scholarships to people to come from other countries. I think that's very important to the extent that knowledge and expertise can be spread. I think maintaining a presence, keeping eyes and ears of the Agriculture Department around the world is important. I think that our agricultural attachés are a great resource at the various embassies we have around the world. Animal Plant and Health Inspection Service, they have people abroad. I think that's one of the issues that Dr. Beckham was alluding to and also the lady, the congressman who was asking about how you hold people accountable. We need to get more people, those kinds of people out in the field and serving at critical countries and embassies around the world. For example, I know in the country of Nigeria, the most populous country in Africa, the Agricultural Attaché's office has been closed and it's being covered as a regional responsibility in one of the other embassies on the continent. So, you know, I think that is the kind of thing that may be ought to be reconsidered. We need a robust presence of both our general agricultural experts and agricultural economists and our scientific people as well.
Thank you. My time.
Gentleman's time has expired. Now recognize Mr. Newhouse for five minutes questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you both for being here this morning. Appreciate your testimony and appreciate both of your service. I'm hopeful that Americans think about their food supply, but my guess is that they probably don't worry about it as much as many of us do. We rely on importations of a lot of food to make our food supply complete. With the potential of, you know, all kinds of things that can happen in this world, wars or some kind of an outbreak of some kind, do you think, first, Ambassador, should we be making plans for more secure domestic food supplies as well as farm inputs? And understanding that there's a balance of other countries' agricultural industries depend on customers abroad, but is there something more we should be doing to secure our domestic food supply in case of an adverse event?
Well, I can't think of anything other than working as we do as a matter of national policy to try to keep the world a secure place. I mean, that's going to be the best way we do it. We're blessed by having a rich agriculture and we're also blessed by having strong agricultural producers nearby, such as Canada also. So I think compared to countries that import a substantial portion of their food needs, we are in quite a privileged position.
Any thoughts, Dr. Beckham?
No, I would agree with that. I think we are in a privileged position. And I think we're doing a good job of securing the food system. I think we have, like I said, there's probably more we can do, but...
Keep up what we're doing, basically.
Keep up and continue to move forward with the innovation and the research, et cetera.
So I come from the state of Washington where we have the notorious reputation, I guess, of being the place where, of the cow that stole Christmas back in 2003 and the mad cow disease, which was only a couple of miles from my home, by the way. You talked about our biosurveillance and detection systems and made the clear point, I think, that they're not as robust as they should be or could be. So could you give us some thoughts about some of the obstacles perhaps that are there and some of the things that maybe we could help impact to improve that?
Sure. And let me say, I think, you know, I want to come back to, we've made a significant amount of progress. We have the National Animal Health Laboratory Network. We have USDA supporting that network, DHS supporting that. We've developed new diagnostic technologies. But what can we do? So early detection's always the key. So continuing to support the NOL and supporting the NOL to a higher level. I think in my testimony, I pointed out what the LRN funding is as opposed to the National Animal Health Laboratory Network funding. And if you take a look at how those labs operate, I mean, we are key to seeing any zoonotic diseases coming through those labs at any one point in time. So definitely enhancing the funding to the National Animal Health Laboratory Network. Biosurveillance, I come back to it. Biosurveillance, robust biosurveillance depends on, obviously, the ability to get first responders involved, veterinarians out in the field collecting information. But it also depends on the ability to protect the data of the industry. And until we can do that, we're not going to have the robust biosurveillance system that we need. We need that biosurveillance system consists of veterinarians out in the field collecting information. We need it in more near-real time. We're beginning to develop mobile applications that can come back to a centralized location so you can take a look at anomalies in animal health. Continuing to work with USDA and DHS, that's actually a DHS-funded project, but it's in partnership, very strong partnership with USDA. So I think that, that particular area, again, enhancing the NOL, having the countermeasures on the front side, all of those are things that we can do to ensure that we are more prepared, that we catch it up front, and that we can get it under control when it does happen.
So you talked about too, about the importance, and we learned this very well in Washington State about traceability and knowing, you know, animals where they came in contact and where they've been and where they've gone. How are we doing nationally there?
So we're working very well. There are some projects out there. Obviously, the swine industry has the premises ID and that's really helpful for being able to take a look at, you know, where animals are moving and so forth. And so we worked very closely, actually, when I was at A&amp;M, with the swine industry to develop a biosurveillance system that's based on the PRIM ID and the movement of swine. The other industries, I think, is going to be a little bit more challenging. But looking at DHS, again, has got a funded project in biosurveillance where you can look at unique identifiers. And as long as that data can be, as long as that data can be maintained confidentially, it's not subject to FOIA, I think those are things that we can work with the industries to move forward. If you ask right now how several states are doing it, a lot of it is paper-only. But I will say USDA recently invested and with the state animal health officials' offices in several different states on a system that they deployed to hold a lot of their animal health information. And so they are making progress in that, but we still don't have the real-time capability that we need. And sometimes doing those trace outs and trace backs can be difficult.
Yeah, but essential.
Absolutely.
We have to have them, yeah.
Right. I've heard some state vets, and this was a while back. This is not recently. Again, I want to point out USDA has invested in a system and they're in the process of, that's been deployed out into the states where they can actually have animal health information in those states collected into that system. It's called USA Herds. And then there's another one out there as well. But I'll tell you, I have heard animal health officials say that they literally have to go into boxes and dig through where animals have moved to and from. And that's just not going to be a doable thing in a foot and mouth disease outbreak. So we have to get more real time. And we have to take advantage of the technologies. But most of all, we have to be able to incentivize the industry to utilize those systems. And the way that we're going to incentivize the industry is to give them something back. We can't just take, take, take. We got to give back. We got to give them back something that helps them in their production. And we have to ensure them that we're going to protect that data.
Yeah, absolutely.
Gentleman's time has expired. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The wonderful opportunity we have to ask questions sometimes at the end of the hearing means that all the questions I had written have already been taken. But that's okay. My colleagues, they know I'm never at a shortage of being able to use my time to ask any other questions. I'm, this is an issue that's very important to me since I represent central Illinois and what I would consider some, the breadbasket of America and the world. And agri-terrorism is a concern that I don't think many of my constituents think about. So the discussion we've had here today, going along with, is in your written testimony, Ambassador, you know, you mentioned the problem that gets talked about in this committee a lot, is we've got to feed millions more people in the future with the technology, the land, and the products that we have today. So how do we continue to make that even, make America even more productive, even though we are the safest and most productive food suppliers in the world? And Dr. Beckham, in your written testimony, you actually stated the very elements that make the U.S. agricultural system robust and productive also make it vulnerable to an incident. I'm a father of three kids. I mean, that's very scary to me and something that I don't normally think about on a daily basis. And we hear some, some things that make you really scared as a parent. You know, we've got to feed nine billion people by 2050. And as you know, we've got to continue to lead. And with that in mind, how do we increase our ag production, both in your industry and in the grain industry too? What can we do and how does biotechnology play a role in this?
So I'll defer to Dr. Beckham on most of this, but I think one is science, technology, biotechnology, for sure, if you're going to have to produce 70% more food in the world.
But how do we get some of our allies to be able to take the biotechnological products that we produce that can produce more that we're going to need? How do we stop them from implementing policies that don't allow us to do that?
Well, ultimately, I think the truth is going to win out and so are their farmers and their own intellectual capabilities. They're going to see the benefits that this activity brings. The other issue we need to mention is waste. I mean, how much, because of bad infrastructure, food is lost in many parts of the world because of wastage during the time that it's getting from a point of origin to market. They estimate something like 30%. So the development of efficient supply chains around the world, I think, is another area where American knowledge and expertise can be brought to bear and help these countries out.
So I would agree. And I would say, going back to the science and technology, that eventually, based on the science, that they will, the truth will win out. And we have to have that scientific evidence, obviously, that it is safe. I think the other way is through international training and helping people become more efficient and looking at more of the global perspective. I think we have to take a look at that. I mean, if you take a look also about, you know, foot and mouth disease really drops production in animals, but yet abroad, they don't allow recombinant vaccines to be utilized. And so how do we, how do we turn that table to allow the use of new technologies and new innovations abroad to help us control some of these more devastating diseases that drop milk production and that drop production in animals? I think those are things that over time, when we have to feed nine billion people, are going to come to the forefront and the world as a whole, working with OIE. Again, I come back to working with our international partners and the World Organization for Animal Health to get the truth out about genetically-modified recombinant vaccines and production. And so that we can begin to educate and train and use these innovations to increase our food supply.
All right. This is fascinating to me. And your discussion about biosurveillance programs and what we need to do to do that in addition to producing more here in America is something that I hope this committee continues to look at and highlight. And I want to commend the chairman for having both of you here today. So thank you for your time today, and I'll yield back the balance of my time.
Gentlemen, you're back. Mr. Rousler, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you both for being here today. Appreciate it very, very much. And I found your, both of your testimonies very intriguing. You know, I've always felt like if we got our agriculture policy right, our energy policy right, and our infrastructure policy right, we're in the catbird seat for centuries to come. Now, one issue that's very, very intriguing to me, and I'm trying to wrap my mind around it, Mr. Ambassador, you talked about it a little earlier during the course of this hearing, and that's water. I never would have thought, when I was growing up as a kid, that one day I'd be drinking a bottle of water, you know, that you buy. You know, when I was growing up, if you wanted water, you just went through your garden hose. And much less, never would have thought anybody'd pay $5 for a cup of coffee. So the world changes. And certainly, water is becoming more and more of the scariest resource in agriculture. You can't grow anything without the sun and without water. And we were in, Mr. Newhouse and I and several other members were in Israel earlier this year during the course of the August recess. And they do a magnificent job over there of water conservation and recycling of their water. And I believe, if I recall, they recycle close to 80% of their water there. So I'm just curious, based on your experience and your thoughts, if you could talk more about water and the issue and what we need to be doing here in this country. Obviously, it's been a very acute problem in California and other parts of the country based on, you know, the climate, et cetera. And it's something I think we really need to start thinking about now. And so I'm just curious your thoughts and analysis of that.
Well, first of all, what you mentioned about your experience in Israel, I think, has to do a little bit with this whole culture of waste-not-want-not. I mean, they value every scrap of material resources they have and they do their best to conserve them. So I think part of it has to do with an attitude. There's some other areas of the world where governments and societies are not well enough organized to cope with the water problems they have, like we were talking about, the situation of drought in Syria that happened to coincide. I'm saying, I'm not saying it caused the civil war, but it happens to coincide with a period of real civil strife. So they've really got a very difficult situation. I worry also about water contamination. I used to look at the Tigris and Euphrates River when I was serving in Iraq, and I was wondering what the heck was going into that river from the source countries all further to the north and then all the way down along the way. So I think there's the problem of water contamination, which is also a serious issue. I think ultimately, the market is going to help us resolve these issues because there's going to be a time when market, when water is just going to be more costly for us and for our society to protect and preserve. And I think as that, as that happens, I think we're going to take a more careful and judicious attitude towards the management of water. But I think we're going to probably do it. On the way, we'll probably pay a few expensive lessons to get to that point.
Dr. Beckham, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back my time.
Gentlemen, you're back. Mr. Thompson for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Beckham, Ambassador, thank you so much for being here. Incredibly important topic. There are a lot at risk if we don't, if we don't properly prepare, obviously. Dr. Beckham, the numbers that you shared, you know, the, how, in America, how we're blessed with affordable food, 64.4% versus a range of 11 to 47%, 9.2% of our jobs, a trillion-dollar business, a huge part of our gross domestic product. That, I mean, there's a lot at risk from many perspectives there, both on all fronts. Dr. Beckham, my most recent ag listening session I did, I was with a group of producers. We spent a morning, you know, talking about their issues, concerns, hearing what was on their mind. And they identified basically what they saw as some threats, obviously, to food security or food insecurity. Workforce was on there. Regulations was on there. They talked about how easy, what it's like to be a producer and to have a regulation you have to follow. And the guidance you're given is 1,000 pages from USDA. And then, of course, bioterrorism came up as well. Now, you've shared some recommendations to deal with the agri-terrorism, the integrity, what I see is food integrity perspective for food safety, and really good, some good things. Incentivize interdisciplinary work, better centralize... some good things, incentivize interdisciplinary work, better centralized coordination, better surveillance and education. Wanted to run by you, one of the solutions these producers shared with me to get your thoughts on, it was more frontline, actually, but it was to see more of a presence through our extension program, which I'm a huge fan of, extension, but we, there aren't many places where we have an agent that's really focused with expertise on food safety or integrity. To have that, now, that's really a boots-on-the-ground level, but somebody to be there to counsel, to advise, to, to guide producers around these food safety and, and what I would call food integrity issues. Wanted to get your thoughts on, on what these folks had suggested.
Oh, absolutely critical, absolutely. So I would say that having a robust extension system out that could help talk about things like, or, and help with workforce development, that could help do training in biosecurity, that can help talk about the business continuity plans that have been developed, that can help talk about the new veterinary feed directive, and all of those types of items with our producers. Being on the frontline, ag extension is so incredibly important, and with support that more across the U.S., obviously, in Texas, there's a very robust ag extension program, and I would like to see that ag extension program come back nationally and that there be more boots-on-the-ground interfacing with our producers. That's where the land-grant universities play a role. That is what a land-grant mission is. We should be taking the knowledge that's in the research side of the land grant and getting that out to our producers, and that will help us have a more safe, secure food supply if we do that.
Very good. Thank you. I was a proud graduate of another land-grant university, Penn State University. I couldn't agree more. Ambassador, the sixth trend you mentioned was energy prices, the impact on production costs and diverting more crops for fuel. In your view, in what ways might this issue be addressed by Congress?
Well, I think, just generally speaking, I think to do whatever it can to ensure that energy prices in this country and in the world are governed by market conditions. I think wherever there's restrictions to trade in energy, I think that that can have an inhibiting effect on, on the market. I'm thinking particularly of, of allowing energy exports from the United States, which I think would be a good thing rather than a bad one, and I think it could have a sektary effect on the global market.
In your, in your testimony, you had referenced the importance of research and research, obviously, in agriculture and agriculture issues through our land-grant universities. So I want to sort of revisit with you what I talked to Dr. Beckham about. What do you see the role of research or land-grant universities when it comes to food security? How important is that? What role should it play?
Well, I, I think, I think I said right at the beginning of my statement, I think that the establishment, the Homestead Act of 1861, I think, was revolutionary legislation, which I think, to which I think we can attribute a significant measure of the success of our agricultural system. So I think that needs to be continued, and I think it is also a, a good role model for other countries in the world seeking to establish robust agricultures of their own. So, I mean, in, in both senses, I think it's very important. And then lastly, I think we need to keep up these capabilities, whether it's for biosurveillance or for all the other things that are necessary in the field of agriculture. We need to maintain a strong agricultural, agro-scientific capability here in the United States.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, his time's expired. Mr. Allen for five minutes.
Thank you, and I had to run out for a moment. I've got two hearings going on here simultaneously, so, but I want to thank you for your testimony earlier, and I want to express to you that I do believe that if we can help other countries develop their agriculture, then I believe that that country will be a friend for life. I know that agriculture, I grew up on a farm, it's very important not only to the development, to feeding people, but it's also very good as far as dignity and the ability to, to produce something, particularly as valuable as food is, particularly in certain areas of the world. I guess my question is, there are some nations, obviously, that are difficult to deal with. But are we doing all we need to do in those nations? You know, some come to mind, I've been on mission trips in several areas of the world, Moldova, Kenya, South Africa, South America. Are we doing everything that we need to do from the standpoint of this house as far as making this available to these countries?
As far as, I didn't catch the last, the very last part.
Is there, do you have anything that we need to be doing here as a body to extend the friendship of agriculture, development, and that sort of thing to those countries that, that we do have a relationship with?
Yeah. Well, I mean, first of all, I do think, I agree with you that it's, it's something that is very positive. I think these scholarships and these grants that you give to people to come for the Agriculture Department, an AID gift for people to come here is a very positive thing, so I think you need to keep your eye on the funding for those programs so that it doesn't atrophy or disappear. I think the other thing, I was mentioning this earlier, I'm not sure you were in the room at the time, the maintaining the presence of our own people, Agriculture Department and others abroad, so that they can be ambassadors for U.S. agriculture abroad, and they can make very good friends, and they can also help identify people, upcoming talent, that may be good candidates for scholarship activity of some kind or another here in the United States. But I couldn't agree with you more that in terms of relationship building, agriculture, given its tremendous standing here in the United States and the high, and its high quality, is a, is an excellent diplomatic tool.
As far as, on the other side of that equation, nations that we have assisted, or maybe they've done this on their own, we, we tend to have conflict with through the WTO and, you know, Brazil, as far as the cotton market right now, in our production of cotton, the world market price is 60 cents, and obviously, our farmers can't make it on that. You know, in your travels and, and your understanding of the world needs, how can we come together on the fact that, you know, we don't want to threaten our farmers, but at the same time, we want to help, we want to help these other folks?
Well, I think you've mentioned a particularly sensitive example, right? The cotton, and it's been an issue, particularly with Brazil, for what, several decades, if I'm not mistaken. And so we've got some of these sensitive agriculture products of our own as well, I mean, other ones. But I think for the great majority of these products, we've tried to develop free trade relationships with countries, and I think ultimately, that's probably the best way to go and to the benefit of agricultural competitiveness and the quality of agricultural production.
As far as trade agreements, I agree with you. We need to have understandings with each, each nation, particularly those that, that we want to do business with. Well, I, that's, I yield back the remainder of my time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Chairman Neil's back. Thank you. Recognize myself for five minutes. Ambassador Bob Goodlatte couldn't stay to get to his question. It's expand a little bit on what G, G.T. was talking about with respect to energy costs and, and crops that we use. His specific question was, could you elaborate on the policy of potential impact that the diversion of crops to fuel could have on our food security? In your testimony, you talked about the amount of corn crop that goes into ethanol versus foods.
Right.
Expand on that a little bit.
Well, I mean, I think, again, I think that perhaps the marketplace is going to also deal with that issue over time because it's kind of hard to sort of allocate and, and get into some sort of a command economy type of situation where you say you're going to allow product X to be used for one purpose but not for another. But I suspect that's going to sort itself out over time, especially with the development of all sorts of other alternative energy possibilities going forward.
Well, thank you. Dr. Beckham, we've spent a lot of time talking about foot and mouth disease and the, and the impact it have. I'm genuinely concerned with the feral hog population that's exploding in some places. If it were to get introduced by accident on purpose into that population, I understand if you can control it in a particular herd, but what if it got into the feral hog population? What happens to us then?
It would be very difficult to control if it gets into the feral hog population. With over four million feral hogs probably in the state of Texas, it would be a nightmare with the interface that we have between feral hogs and several of our farms and production systems. So that's where biosecurity becomes really important.
Yeah. What, what do you think our trading partners, what would their reaction be to an outbreak with respect to cattle and beef that weren't necessarily affected, but just a threat of having, if we had the outbreak in the feral hog population, what, what do you think our trading partners' reactions would be?
I think they would obviously look to the U.S., but closed doors on trade for a period of time until you could demonstrate the domestic animal population was free, and that would be a very difficult road.
I got you. Both of you, the time that's left, talk to us about the, how a safe food supply fits into, to overall U.S. national security, just to kind of hammer that one more time. Ambassador first.
Well, I mean, it's, it's absolutely critical. You don't want to have eruption of crises with respect to the safety of our food, and I think probably the best way to deal with it is to continue to have the kind of the surveillance and other monitoring types of capabilities that we do have, and that we have to constantly be on our guard.
Dr. Beckham.
And I would just reiterate that and say, obviously, agriculture is just absolutely critical to our food supply and our national security and the things that we have to do to continue to address that, include everything from investing in the One Health concept, biosurveillance, working really closely with our industries. I think that one's probably one of the most important ones, is that we really work closely with them to figure out what their needs are, to help them, to help us understand how they do business, how they move animals, where they move animals, and how we can help them continue to do those things in the event that we do have a disease incursion of some sort.
Dr. Beckham, you've mentioned the One Health Initiative, One Health Concept several times. Would you walk us through that?
Okay. Well, as stated earlier, the One Health Concept's been around for quite some time, and it's just the concept that animal health, human health, environmental health are linked. So whether it's with diseases or with a toxin or with some other agent, or just in general, we all have to inhabit this planet together. And so we have to understand that whatever happens with animal health affects our food supply, diseases that can jump from animals to humans, it's all a One Health concept. We have to begin to approach critical challenges that affect us today in a more comprehensive way. So we can't just look at things in a silo. USDA can't be working on a vaccine for rift valley fever and so could somebody with HHS with no concept of what each other's doing and, and direction, because then we're, we're duplicating funding efforts and we're not working in the same direction. Not saying that's happening, but I'm saying those types of things don't lead us to really take a holistic approach at, as to the One Health. So what does a disease look like in animals? Is it able to hop over to humans? Can we develop animal models of human diseases like cancer? So all of that is the One Health concept and really starting to institutionalize it. Again, the concept's been around for a very, very long time, but it's really hard to get momentum behind that without some equalization of funding and some larger body that is incentivizing that One Health approach to our greater challenges.
Or some monster crisis.
Right. We don't want to be reactive, we want to be proactive.
Well, I want to thank both our witnesses. Today's hearing was titled, "American Agriculture and Our National Security," but as you, I want to thank both of you. This is the inaugural event for this issue. We're going to continue to explore this thing over time and to continue to help broaden the narrative that agriculture weaves its way through almost every aspect of national security and, and world security, starting with Kika Deligarre's famous quote, you know, if you can't feed them on submarines, then they're not going to be able to fight. Through everything, infrastructure, the impact that, that threats to infrastructure has on agriculture, whether shipping lanes or, or domestic infrastructure, the various bio-defenses and bio-surveillance is everything that goes on to people going into a restaurant or at the grocery store and buying something, they automatically assume it's safe. You don't ever question that. That, that confidence we have in the current system could be shaken dramatically if we're not careful, and the impact that strong economy, ag economies have on every nation. The prosperity created by, by strong agriculture is, is a, is a good offensive weapon with, against every, every aspect of things, people's lives where they don't have jobs and can't provide for themselves is impacted positively by, by strong production agriculture in every nation. So Ambassador, thank you. Dr. Beckham, thank you very much. Bless you for, for being here with us this morning. And as I said, we will continue this, this narrative about how production agriculture weaves into the broader security issues across this world as, as we move forward and helping create some sort of a grand strategy approach to looking at all of these, these issues. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 call-in today's to receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by, by a member. This hearing on, on the Committee on Agriculture is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. I misunderstood one question where he asked about the aerial surveillance. Was that confidential data that was being, you remember the one where?
It was. It was.[1616.11]